Call the July 16, 2024 agenda briefing to the order. I'll call to meet the order at nine. Commissioner Williams has the invocation and the pledge. Approval of the minutes from the June 18 meeting. Discussion or adjustments to the agenda. We don't have any adjustments to it.
Yes, one item is under new business on your back page. Item 24, required training for Wayne County Board of Commissioners for Public Health Department.
Can we do that since the air conditioning's on?
Yes, sir.
We can on? Okay. All right, should remove that.
Yes, sir, that's the only change. Oh, wait a minute, I didn't see those. Also have two additional budget amendments. I guess you've been placed on their desk that we add two budget amendments and we'll let Angie go over those.
All right, special presentations. July Wayne County Heaver Spotlight from Jay's Kitchen. Presentation, Barry Merrill. Then a motion to approve the 2024 Purple Heart Joint Proclamation as presented by Brian Vogt with the Wayne County Veterans and Patriots Coalition. Number six, introduction of Vina Hamm, Deputy Director of Social Services, and introduction of Michelle Estrada, Crawford Extension Director by Assistant County Manager Ginger Moore. Then we'll recess the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting, convene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments, have a public hearing to receive public comment on a setback variance request for a property identified as tax parcel 268-149-6516 and 268-149-6404 located at the corner of Little River Drive and 581 North. The board can take action after the public hearing.
I've looked at that and I think she'll has too. I really don't see a problem with it. Barry may disagree with me, but.
Then we adjourn the County Board of Adjustments. Reconvene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting at a 9:30 public hearing, receive public comments on the amendment to section 70-105, subclass four of the Wayne County subdivision ordinance to require a fire hydrant to be placed at the entrance of all new subdivisions and the board take action following the public hearing. Got unfinished business, motion to adopt a resolution by the County of Wayne to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds and with appropriate budget amendment. Then we go to consent agenda. Late disabled veterans exemption application, can you put that up on the screen, please?
There's numerous ones, do you want all of them?
Notice that they've all been vetted, correct?
Correct.
They've been all vetted, not the tax office and.
The late elderly disability exemption as well?
Yes.
All right, the late present use value applications.
There's three of those.
Then we go to budget amendments.
So we are at our close for the year for '23-'24. So this first group of budget amendments will be for 2023-2024. So to start off with, number 550, this is from the Sheriff's Department. We are simply just moving account lines from the equipment line item to vehicles for their dive team in the amount of $17,827. There was a previous budget amendment approved, we're just correcting the line item. And you'll see that with a lot of these budget amendments, it's just a correction of the line items. The next one is 556, that's finance. This is to move a purchase of a trailer from ARPA funds. That's from our equipment line item to our vehicles line item in the amount of $37,500. The next one is number 557, that's from social services. This is to transfer funds to the overtime line item to cover the cost of any administrative and economic services staff. And this is reimburse 50% federal incentive. Number 558, this is for the Sheriff's Office. This is also just to reappropriate those funds to vehicles from the equipment line item out of their seized property. I did verify this and this was for the purchase of 15 radios. Number 560, this again is a reappropriation to a correct line item out of our ARPA funds. This is moving the purchase of raincoats from equipment to grant expenditures because it should not be capitalized. Number 561 is for human resources. This is to reallocate funding for retiree insurance because of a budgetary shortfall in the amount of $7,801. They're moving those funds out of their food and provisions to hospitalization retirees. Number 556 is for the detention center. This is to move $11,000 to cover an anticipated shortfall in the prepared food services line item. Number 570, this is from social services. This is to transfer funds for IVE eligible foster care children. The number of foster children that were placed in our care exceeded our initial budgetary estimates. This is reimbursed at a rate of 75%. Number 571 is for the detention center. This is to appropriate funds that we received from SCAP in '23-'24 and that was used toward the purchase of a transport van. Number 577, this is facilities. This is to move money to their fuel and diesel and fuel oil line items out of their professional services and their cleaning services line item to carry them through the year. 578 is also facilities, their fleet department. This is to reappropriate $10,020 to their parts line item and their fuel and diesel line item. 579, this is a year in entry that has to be done for the fire department budgets. This is for us to be able to pay out their taxes that they're due because of over collection. So it's a revenue and an expense that are budgeted at the same amount to cover those over collections.
Angie, could you print me a hard copy of that sometime?
I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
I think the only question I had on that was stands way out and that is the Dudley Fire Department, ninety, over $95,000. And it says vehicle tax. Nope, nope, I'm sorry. Was all of that from vehicle tax or what was that from? I mean, how could it be that, that large of a difference?
Is everything that's collected within their district correct?
That is correct.
So their dues are good money?
Yes, sir, and that, we verified all the fire departments yesterday.
All right, just seems awful high for that one department.
Go ahead on to the next.
581 is Sheriff's Office. This is to anticipate or to increase the revenues for controlled substance tax, $4,826.30 from the Department of Revenue to appropriate that in their controlled substance line items. This was, this is a budget amendment to true up our salaries and fringes line items from various departments for the end of the year process. 594, this is for the wages food service. They received additional funding in the amount of $26,909. This is a pass through, so we needed to be able to pay out their last appropriation. 599, that's also for finance. This is for Gateway, which reimburses us for all their expenses. This is to appropriate additional funds needed in their vehicle supplies line item. Number 600, this is for our civil writs and our client account income. This is to recognize income and expense for the entire year for the civil writs activity and DSS trust accounts per Gatsby 84. So this is just an entry because we are required now to put that on our financial statements to record those incomes. Those come in and those go right back out. Number 602, this is to transfer the remaining unspent funds from various projects from the 2017 lobs, which is limited obligation bonds borrowing that was used for the 800 corporate drive roof and Wayne Community College site building construction. This replaces the fund balance that was originally used.
So it goes back into fund balance?
Yes, sir. So I laid on your desk, number 603, the one that was in your agenda packet. Upon further review, I found, I found an error. So the one that is laying on your desk is the correct one. So number 603, this is also a year in entry where we have to reappropriate line items for subscription-based information technology agreements, otherwise called Sabinas, to adhere to Gatsby 96, which was implemented in '23. This budget is, amendment is to anticipate the adjusting entries to be made for the audit, which requires us to budget for these line items.
Any questions? All right, next.
Number 604, this is to appropriate funds in the amount of $2,011,000 that we have received from HUD for the construction of EMS Station 12 near at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base entrance.
And I assume we're waiting to get some type of lease arrangements on the property?
Yes, sir, we're working on.
Well, we haven't got the money yet, neither have we.
It's a reimbursement right now. We're doing surveying work on it as we speak.
Okay.
On the area, we've already worked with the base and identified the area and we're having it surveyed.
Okay, so they'll cooperate with us on that?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be a two-base station?
All right, next.
Number 608, these are funds that we've received, but we need to appropriate those into the appropriate line items. This is to appropriate SCIF funding for various school projects. The majority of that project is $5,325, which is for the Rosewood Middle School construction, $750,000 for Rosewood Track rehabilitation, $750,000 for Southern Wayne Track rehabilitation, and also $175,000 for Charles B. Acocks concession stand.
Must be going to be a nice concession stand.
You're going to get a lot of $165,000, not with all the cooking equipment in it.
Yeah, that's the truth. Nowadays.
I think the Booster Club is matching some of that, so.
That's what I've been told.
Next.
Number 609, this is to move funds out from the seized property line item in the Sheriff's Office. They're moving those funds from equipment to vehicles so we can capture those in the correct accounting line item. The next budget amendment, 614, this was also laid on your desk. This is a walk-on budget amendment. This is for the Finance Office. This is to reallocate line items to adhere to Gatsby 87, which is a required accounting and financial reporting standard that was required by the General Accounting Standards Board. And $88,031, and this is just pass-through funds. That is all that I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Just a minute. Back to the EMS station on the base property. Are we getting a long-term lease on that property or how, you know, how's that working?
Not sure exactly, but I believe it would be probably be a 25-year lease renewable with an additional 25 years.
Okay.
What they talked about to begin with, but I haven't seen any written.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, three years down the road, they say we.
Be similar to what the city had with the Bryan Sports Complex.
Okay, okay.
We got part of that too, don't we? The what? The Bryan Sports Complex. Where do you get the money in it?
We loaned the city some, we loaned the city some money, didn't we?
That's what I was getting at.
Motion to approve final plat for Northwick, Section 3, Barry.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, this is, excuse me, a final plat for Northwick, Section 3. This subdivision has 12 lots. There's another phase to the east of this that's part of the subdivision, they just split it up into two. So Phase 3 is kind of the western edge or the western part of the subdivision with 12 lots. This is at the intersection of Antioch Road and Highway 111 North. The average lot size is about 17,206 square feet. Since it is a final plat, all the improvements are in, the construction is done. And we do have a built-in standards letter from DOT. And so the planning board has reviewed this and recommends approval.
Any questions? All right, Section 4.
All right, Section 4 is the east side or in the remainder of Northwick. Again, with it being a final plat, all the improvements are in. This side has 11 lots. We do have a built-in standards letter on this side, the lots are a little larger, so your average lot size is around 34,000 square feet. And the planning board does recommend approval.
Any questions? Bonnie Farms, Section 12.
All right, Bonnie Farms, Section 12. This too is a final plat. This is out at Genoa Road and Pecan Road. The subdivision street that you see on your screen actually cuts across from Pecan Road to Genoa Road. There are eight lots that they're adding to Bonnie Farms Road. It was previously constructed probably about a year or two ago. And we do have a built-in standards letter on that. DOT did require that they had to put in a turn lane on Genoa Road, which is what the delay was for the additional eight lots. So they do have that turn lane in at this point. So all the improvements are complete with the subdivision and the planning board does recommend approval.
Is that, driving that curve on a street, is that a blue line ditch or just?
It is not a blue line ditch. It comes out of that pond, but it's just a ditch. And they have had DEQ look at it to make a determination as to whether it would require any sort of buffering and this segment does not.
Okay.
But they did have a culvert there where it would pass through underneath that road.
Where'd you say they had to put in a turning lane?
On Genoa Road.
And, oh, maybe it's on the next page, but it's not.
Well, it's actually in a previous phase. They actually made them go back and add it.
Okay.
Because this road cuts all the way through, but that section that comes in on Genoa Road was already done several years ago. But they came, DOT had them go back and put in a turn lane now because they're adding these eight lots to this subdivision.
Okay. I didn't see the connection on Genoa.
Yeah, that's right, sorry about that.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Our Kendall Farms?
All right, our last one is Kendall Farms. This is a final plat. This is out on U-Hope Road, just west of Eastern Wayne High School. There are 78 lots on this one. The average lot size is a little over 22,000 square feet and all the improvements are in with this. We do have a built-in standards letter from DOT as well and the planning board does recommend approval.
Who's responsibility to keep it under that main power line? I mean, does that go with the property owners or is that responsibility of Duke or?
Yeah, the property owners will not, it would be Duke. The property lines will actually go up to that right-of-way, so it won't be part of the individual lots. So it would be the responsibility of Duke to kind of keep that.
Well, who, who's going to be responsible for letting Duke know if it's grown up or whatever? Or does Duke do a pretty good job of keeping their right-of-way clean?
Since these are those large, over those, the larger power lines, they'll typically monitor those and keep those knocked down.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, 18, motion to adopt resolution to convey 900 Brick Street, Goldsboro, PIN 259-331-760 to the City of Goldsboro. That'll be Andrew.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a request from the City of Goldsboro. This property is the old animal shelter. So if you go down Elm, past 117 and cross over 117, past the Armory, the National Guard down there. It's a vacant property. It's what's labeled right here on your map as 900. The City of Goldsboro has a solid waste facility right there and they asked us to go ahead and convey this over. I checked with Kendall and this property hasn't been used for years. We don't use it for storage and I don't even think that it's on, we cut the grass or anything on it. So the city has asked us to convey that over and so they can start taking care of it since their facility is right there.
All right, any questions?
I think it's been discussed for quite some time and it's just never been done.
So they can't take over their animal?
I don't, I don't think that building's in shape to suitable for anything at this point. Probably just needs to go ahead.
It's in a fund zone.
Yeah, worn down.
Just making a statement. 19, anybody got any questions on that? Thanks, sir. Motion to adopt resolution conveying 14 Hurricane Matthew Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Disaster Recovery Buyout Properties to the town of Seven Springs. Andrew?
So these are Hurricane Matthew, our Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. These are buyout properties where with FEMA's funds that run through the North Carolina Emergency Management. We administer that program for all the entire county. That include, included the City of Goldsboro and the town of Seven Springs. We are finally at a point that we have bought out those properties, demolished it, and we're ready to close out the grant. Seven Springs is asking us to go ahead and convey these over. They'd like to use these properties for recreational purposes. I think they're going to use them for RV hookups for people who go down the river or using the river for recreational purposes. We've checked with North Carolina Emergency Management, they're fine with it. And once this is passed today, we'll give everything over to FEMA so they can issue final approval. And there is a condition on these, on these conveyances that they use them for recreational purposes, that they're open spaces and you can't develop them, so.
Any questions?
And actually at your next meeting, we're going to go ahead and take action on the Goldsboro properties too, so.
Any questions? All right, thanks, sir. Motion to approve work authorization, number 10, terminal improvements, whatever CATX means, for the Wayne Exec Jetport with appropriate budget amendment.
This is to go ahead and provide funding to start an environmental study on proposed grant application for renovation of the FBO terminal building out there.
Got it. Any questions? All right, 21, request for new fee approval. Migrant labor camp inspections as recommended by the Wayne County Health and Human Service Advisory Board, presented by Environmental Health Manager Kevin Whitley.
I am not Kevin, good morning.
You're not.
I'm here on behalf of Kevin. He sends his apologies, he had something come up this morning and cannot be with us. But we are bringing before you all, as part of the migrant housing act in North Carolina, we are currently required to do these migrant camp inspections to do a visual inspection of the septic system to make sure that we don't have sewage on the ground. And so we have not been collecting a fee for this, but we would like upon your approval to begin doing this. We're doing about 80 annually. That number fluctuates based on the loss of camp or new camps. We are proposing a fee of $50 for this and we would, and these are annual permits that we do for this.
Any questions? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We go to new business, motion to adopt resolution by the County of Wayne authorizing executive execution of Kroger opioid settlement and approving the second supplemental agreement for additional opioid funds. Is that, talk about it now or later?
We can talk about it in the meeting.
Motion to approve a voting delegate and alternate voting delegate for the NCACC Annual Conference in August.
Yes, sir, that's a request every year prior to the NCACC conference in August. And we would need to do that today so we can send it in.
And who will be attending that conference?
Commissioner Williams is attending.
Commissioner Foster.
And Commissioner Foster and.
And Commissioner Gurley.
Chairman Gurley.
I'm not staying Saturday. It is Saturday.
That would actually be on Saturday. So we do know that Commissioner Williams has agreed to stay through Saturday.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we go ahead and possibly move that to consent agenda and add Commissioner Williams as our voting delegate?
I'm not certain that we have anyone else staying Saturday that I don't know Commissioner Foster is.
I think he is.
He could actually be your alternate.
I'm good with that.
I will, ma'am. All right, we're going to remove 24, the required training for the Wayne County Board of Commissioners for Public Health Department by Health Director Suzanne LeDewin. We go to public comments, county manager report, board commissioner report. We got any closed session right now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Have a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of?
With your counsel to preserve attorney-client privilege.
I'll favor raise your right hand. All right.
Okay, come out of closed session. We'll take a five-minute recess before our nine o'clock.
Well, nine, ten meeting.
Kayla, can you come up here and...
I'll call our July sixteenth, twenty twenty four commissioner meeting to order. Commissioner Williams, you have your invocation.
Yes, please bow your heads. Lord Father, we thank you. We thank you for having each and every one of us here today, Lord God. We know a lot of us didn't make it today. There's been a lot of death and hurt in our communities, Lord God, and we just ask that you cover these family members throughout our county, Lord God. You give them closure for the loss of their loved ones, Lord God, and you just keep everyone safe, Lord God. We ask that you just have a blessed meeting today, Lord God. Let us use this meeting to build up our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Williams, have a pledge. Holy stamp.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. If we have an issue that we have to clear the building, from here to my right, I'll go with me out this door. Here to my left, we'll go out with Carol. Chip and I'll sweep the floor. If you have a medical issue, we have two EMS of our finest at the back, so if you have anything, see them. All right, I entertain a motion to approval of the June eighteenth minutes. Please cast your vote. That all go through?
Yes, sir.
Are they gonna show up? Okay. All right, do I have... Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve today's adjusted agenda? Okay.
We'd like to add two under consent agenda to the budget amendments. A budget amendment number six fourteen. And if you would remove and replace, you were given a removal and replacement for budget amendment six oh three. Also, if you would, under new business, if you would move item number twenty-three to approve the voting delegate and alternate voting delegate for NCACC conference for Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Foster, move that under consent agenda.
Okay.
And then remove item number twenty-four, require training for help for Wayne County Board of Commissioners for public health, remove that completely from the agenda. And that will, we'll have instructions on that later day. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
I'm asking you to remove budget amendments for individual action.
Budget, each one of them or just individual? Are you talking about just take budget amendments off?
Just budget amendments.
I got you. All right, all in favor of the adjusted agenda, please, or give me a motion? Do I have a motion for the adjusted agenda?
So move.
All right, all in favor, please cast your vote. Good. All right. All right, so go on to special presentations, a presentation for the July Wayne County Hero Spotlight Award by Jay's Kitchen. Morning.
Morning.
So I'm honored to present this month's Jay's Hero Award. This month, we are going to recognize Amy Smith from Veterans Affairs. Amy and her team go above and beyond every day to assist our veterans, to help them navigate the system and get the benefits that they are eligible for. They file claims, they even go to VA hearings and help present those claims on behalf of veterans. When the base was no longer processing claims, Wayne County Veterans Services stepped up and took on that additional workload. In just the last six months, Amy and her team have helped secure three point four million dollars in back payments. And through phone calls and walk-ins, Amy and her staff have assisted over twenty-five hundred veterans just in the last six months. Amy's dedication shines through in her work, and I just want to share a phone call that I received from a veteran that worked directly with Amy. His name was Mr. Sutton, and he said he called the county manager's office because he wanted someone to know what he had gone through. He said for the last several years, Amy had worked with him directly to help him navigate Veterans Affairs. He said he was a survivor and suffered from PTSD. And because of his disorder, there were several times he couldn't make his appointments or he missed application deadlines. No matter what, Amy stayed in contact with him. She continued to advocate for him, and Mr. Sutton received every benefit that he was entitled to. Amy works to help those who often feel forgotten after they complete their service. Mr. Sutton ended his phone call by saying that Wayne County and veterans are lucky to have Amy on our team, and we wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Sutton. So Amy Smith, congratulations on being this month's Jay's Hero.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work and you're inspiring us all. Thank you for, you know, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, it's nice you come back up. We want to take a picture. And Amy, you're welcome to say something if you'd like.
I'm a little call card here. I love what I do. I'm blessed. I'm thankful that I was given the position to do this. Helping veterans is a passion now. I like to help the ones who fought and gave up their lives sometimes for our country. So I'm blessed. I'm the lucky one in this. So, but thank you very much.
Not only are they taking pictures, but if you look at the cameras up there, Joel will get one from the control booth as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. I visited Amy this past week or last week, and she showed me some, she showed me some numbers that she has, that her and her team have acquired for our veterans, and it's amazing the numbers that she's, the amount of money that she's got for them. So we want to tell her thank you for her service to our veterans. All right, next, our presentation by Mr. Barry Merrill.
Good morning, county commissioners and county manager and staff. My name is Barry Merrill. This is my wife Marilyn and my daughter Ashley. And we're here as residents of four-three-two Club Knolls Road in Dudley, and I'm proud to say in Wayne County. On the morning of May the second, Marilyn and I, we're both retired. We're in our den talking, and Marilyn suddenly stopped talking, and she made a noise I'd never heard before. I've been told it was her body gasping for breath. And I called out to her, are you all right? And she didn't respond. Marilyn, are you all right? And she didn't respond. And went over and put my fingers on her neck trying to get a pulse. I couldn't find one. And kind of responsibly, automatically, I called nine-one-one. And a lady by the name of Samantha Eckberg answered my call. And she asked me for my address and asked me to confirm my address and then said, what is the nature of emergency? And I said, my wife's heart has stopped beating. And she told me to get Marilyn flat and on the floor, and I couldn't do that. But I got her flat on the couch that she was sitting on. And she told me to flatten my palm and put it between her breasts and put my other hand on top of it. And we started chest compressions. I was told that my call initially went in at eight forty-seven that morning. And about eight fifty-five that morning, there was a knock on the door, a wrapping, a beating on the door, if you will, by the EMT Karen Gutierrez. And I jumped up, let her in, and Karen said, let's get Marilyn on the floor, which I helped her do. And about that time, two other EMTs, Jennifer Ruiz and Hannah Akok came in. And I got out of their way, and they got the D-Fib hooked up to her and started, if you will, saving her life. When they started loading Marilyn up on the gurney, I asked if I could ride with them to the hospital. They said, no, cannot do that. And so I don't drive because I got vision issues. So I called, tried to call a couple of friends. And as I was struggling to get ahold of someone who could take me to the hospital, Hannah, EMT Hannah, said, get in the vehicle. And she brought me to UNC Wayne in her vehicle so I could be with my wife. The next day after that, UNC Wayne did not have the personnel needed to effectively treat Marilyn. So they lifelighted her to Chapel Hill. And for the next four weeks, we were at Chapel Hill and then at Hillsborough, the hospital at Hillsborough for rehab. And on May twenty-ninth, we got home. And for the last seven weeks, she's been going through rehab at the hospital. We're at home, but we traveled to the hospital for rehab, and we've been doing that for seven weeks. During all this, Marilyn had an, I need to get the anoxic, is that right, Marilyn, Ashley?
Yes.
Blood brain injury. And as a result of that, she's gonna have some short-term memory issues for some time to come. But our family and our team of doctors are optimistic. I wanted to recognize those ladies this morning. Samantha, are you here?
No, so she's not here.
Jennifer and Hannah are both here.
Okay, Jennifer Ruiz and...
I'm sorry, Samantha is here.
Samantha is here?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So if y'all could come forward, I would appreciate it. I wanted to recognize these beautiful ladies for helping again to save... And I want to hug you before we get out of here. Again, they were great. They were just, they were great. And I want to thank Dave Kudavec, right?
Yes, sir.
For his help. He's with the EMTs for getting these ladies here. And also to Meredith Peters from the nine-eleven staff for getting Samantha here this morning so we could express appreciation. And I'm Carol, Karen Gutierrez could not be here today. She's out of town. But again, we appreciate them. I also want to, I also want to express appreciation to the county staff for allowing us time on the agenda today. And I want to thank the county commissioners and the county staff for having well-trained professionals like these ladies available so that in our time of need, we've got someone to respond. And again, save a life in this circumstance and help many others in this county. And finally, I want to give praise and honor and glory to our Lord Jesus Christ, for I know his hand was in this. We're standing here today as testimony to his mighty work in us. Thank you for the time this morning.
Thank you.
Just pull that rope right there and help Barry and Marilyn get back there. Ashley, do you want to be in the pictures?
I'm not doing sport, but thank you.
Kayla, if you'll let me know.
Center rope, right, go to, go that way a little bit. Come on over a little bit more so you can get into center of the thing. Very good right there. All right, good.
All right, we got the commissioners behind you, and as soon as, just kind of look up towards the doors, and then you've got them taking pictures. So Joel has got it. I mean, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Merrill, we thank you for recognizing our quality staff. We're blessed to have them in our county, and we thank you. And we always love to hear the good stories. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, as you said, we appreciate, you know, what our people do. But you know, this goes on almost every day. We just don't hear about it. We've, I put our EMS staff and some other departments in the county up against anybody because it's, you don't realize it until you need them. But they're Johnny on the spot, and you know, I can, I can listen on my radio. And it's amazing where you have several trucks out of the same area in the county. And another caller come in, and a truck that's not even, that's not really even responsible for that area call in and say, we'll take that call. I mean, it's not that they're just sitting there waiting. They are professionals at their job. And I want to thank, you know, Alex and Dave and the whole crew for what y'all do because I'd put our paramedics and EMTs up against anybody. But thank y'all.
Thanks, sir. All right, moving on to number five on the agenda, a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four Purple Heart Joint Proclamation as presented by Brian Volk with the Wayne County Veterans and Patriots Coalition.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Like I said, my name's Brian Volk. I'm with the Veterans Coalition here in town. We do a couple of different things, as you're well aware. I've got Larry Edmonds with me. He's our public relations guy. What I have for you today is the proclamation, Goldsboro Wayne. This is a joint proclamation between Goldsboro and Wayne County. Whereas the original Purple Heart, known as the Badge of Military Merit, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. Whereas the Purple Heart was established by General George Washington on August seventh, seventeen eighty-two, during the Revolutionary War, as the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor or merit. And whereas, following nearly one hundred and fifty years of disuse, Purple Heart was reestablished by the President of the United States, February twenty-second, nineteen thirty-two. Whereas the Purple Heart is awarded to military and civilian members of the US Armed Forces who are wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of the enemy and posthumously to the next akin in the name of those who were killed in action or die for wounds received in action. And whereas, citizens of Goldsboro and Wayne County have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for the men and women who have served their country in the armed forces. And whereas, veterans have paid the high price for freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, many citizens of our city, county, and state have earned the Purple Heart as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with enemy forces, construed as a singular, singularity meritorious act of essential service. Now therefore be it resolved that jointly, the Goldsboro City Council and Wayne County Board of Commissioners do hereby honor the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform, wounded or killed by the enemy, while serving to protect our freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Now therefore be it further resolved that jointly, the Goldsboro City Council and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners commend the board of directors of the Goldsboro Wayne Purple Heart Foundation for honoring Purple Heart recipients at its annual banquet on August third, two thousand twenty-four as a special tribute to those service members who have received the Purple Heart and the families of Purple Heart recipients who are deceased. Witness our hands and the seals of the city of Goldsboro and the county of Wayne, North Carolina, this the fifteenth day of July, twenty twenty-four. And it's signed by Mayor Gaylord and Chairman Chris Gurley.
Thanks, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four Purple Heart Joint Proclamation?
I move.
All in favor, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say thank you to y'all. My father-in-law was a Purple Heart recipient from World War Two. And he, he never completely recovered from his injuries. But it didn't keep him from being a very successful farmer. But, but, but he, you know, and you know, back in those days, they did not have the medical equipment and the knowledge that they do today. And he, he, he basically, I'm not going to use the word suffered, but it affected him to the day he died.
Absolutely. It's a, it's a burden that a lot of people carry. The thing I always tell people, every time you see somebody with a Purple Heart, I want you to think about a family who doesn't have anybody there. Because most times when someone receives a Purple Heart, somebody's taken from us. They're killed. So when I wear mine, I don't wear mine, that one for me. I wear it for the nineteen people that died that day that I was wounded. So with that being said, our banquet is on the third. We would love to have you guys there, and at a minimum, a representative, either the chairman or a representative, to make comments and then help read the proclamation with the city of Goldsboro. We greatly appreciate that. You should have received an individual invitation. I've given some more information today. If you have any questions about it, the contact information's on there, and Ms. Carol knows how to get ahold of us. So thank you.
Mr. Borbich.
Thank you, Ryan. I had to honor the Vietnam presentation y'all done. That was, that was wonderful. And everybody should attend the Purple Heart banquet. It is unbelievable, the feeling that you have once you walk in and when you leave. I mean, it's just inspirational. That is one of my favorite things that I do attend, and thank you for all y'all do.
Thank you for all the support that you guys provide us. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Any others? Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sign me up, Kayla.
I'm standing in for Ginger for a moment. She asked me to do this. So apologize for the quick change, but for Ginger, I would like to introduce you to two recently promoted leaders in Wayne County. And we're going to start with Ms. Vita Hamm if she will come up. Vita Hamm is the Deputy DSS Director. Michelle Estrada is not here and she is the newly appointed Cooperative Extension Director. Both Vita and Michelle have dedicated many years of service to the county and we're thrilled to see them take on new roles within the organization. Vita Hamm has been appointed as a Deputy DSS Director. With her wealth of experience and knowledge, Vita will be crucial in supporting the Department of Social Services and providing essential services to our community. Her commitment to our mission and her ability to lead and collaborate will greatly contribute to the department's success. Michelle has assumed the position of Cooperative Extension Director. She has served the county for many years and brings a deep understanding of the unique needs and challenges facing our local agriculture community. We're confident that the Cooperative Extension will continue to thrive under her leadership and provide valuable resources and programs to our farmers, gardeners, and youth. In Wayne County, we are committed to fostering internal growth opportunities. And Vita and Michelle's promotions are a testament to that commitment. We're excited to work closely with them in their new roles and are confident that they will make significant contributions to our organization and the community we serve. So we welcome Vita and Michelle and look forward to working with them in the future. Would you like to?
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. And I just love working in Wayne County. It's a great place to work. My grandmother had a saying. It's a sorry toad won't praise its own pond. Wayne County is a great place to work and I tell people that all the time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just want to personally thank you because, you know, DSS is, it's kind of swept under the rug sometimes. I mean, a lot of the people doesn't realize what goes on there. But y'all probably got one of the toughest jobs in Wayne County. And it takes a dedicated person and a dedicated staff because, I mean, you can probably tell us some horror stories. And I just want to thank you for taking that role on and, and, and thank your staff for what they do because you know, there's so many people out there that need help that can't get help, especially the youth. And we're all God's children and they need to be treated just like your buddy upstairs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vita.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
This lady, every meeting I go to for the board, I've been on that board, probably about five or six years. This lady's always got a smile on her face. I mean, she's always there and I want to say congratulations to you personally, Vita.
Thank you.
You're just a big asset to the department. And good luck. Because the responsibilities is even going to be more. But you have a good person out there too.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to we're going to recess our county board of commissioners meeting and convene the board of adjustments for a public hearing. Board of adjustments public hearing is to receive public comments on his setback variance request for a property identified as tax parcel 268 1496516 and 2681496404 located at the corner of Little River Drive in NC 581 North. Mr. Berry.
Well, multitasking today. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
This is a public hearing for a variance request. And it is a dimensional variance request, so it is for setbacks. The property that has, or the property owners who have requested are Jimmy Gardner Little and Paula Burris Little. The property is located at the corner of Little River Drive in NC 581 North in the Buck Swamp Township. The setback in question is the setback on 581 itself. The setback requirement based on the county code is 60 feet. The applicant is requesting approximately 30 feet, 35 feet from the right of way of 581 North. So it'd be what we call a 25-foot variance. So there are 25 extra feet there. There is a current accessory building there in the yard. They do have a paved, I guess, a concrete pad beside of it on the 581 side. The existing building, accessory building meets setbacks. It's at the 60-foot line, but the concrete pad extends out. And what applicant wants to do is add a lean-to with some supports and of course, a roof line into that 60 feet so that they can use it for a vehicle, you know, to put under, since that concrete pad currently is not covered. With that said, since this is a variance request, state statutes do require as quasidiscernal variance that the vote would be, have to be four-fifths votes. It wouldn't be simple majority. It would have to be a four-fifths approval for any sort of variance request. And also, you do have to keep in mind, and I did list those in your, your information. You have to determine that hardships do exist and there's a list of those, including hardships resulting from personal circumstances. You know, you can't really consider those as a result from actions taken by the applicant or the property owner. Those hardships you can't consider. So there are lists of those hardships in here for you to, to take a look at and consider. But with that said, there is a drawing in your packet. It kind of shows where that is. So you would see there 35 feet. The proposal would be to be 35 feet off of that right-of-way line. Now, keep in mind, it's not 30 feet off of the edge of the road. It's actually 35 feet off of that front property line. So you're looking further. It would actually be further than 35 from the actual edge of the road itself. But you are looking at 35-foot setback versus 60 feet. So it would be a 25-foot variance request. They're asking for 25 additional feet.
So what's DOT's 60-foot? What's DOT?
The right-of-way typically for DOT is 60.
581.
All right, this may not play into it, but the right-of-way for the highway actually were, were, I'm familiar with this location. Actually, Highway 581 used to be closer over to where that actual building is when they built the new bridge.
Yeah, shifted a little.
I mean, is the, is the right-of-way there? Does that, does the state still claim that or is it part of their property or?
They do. The state still claims that right-of-way.
So it's actually, the right-of-way along there is actually a little bit wider than where it normally is?
Yeah, 30, let's see, 35. It's, it looks like it's probably still 60 feet. They probably just shifted the roadway within that existing right-of-way.
Okay.
So is the 60? The line, the property line that's on this map, the green line where you got the 35 and the 60? That green line, the DOT's?
That's DOT's right-of-way.
Right, okay, okay. Are any, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with it.
How are y'all pulling that map up?
You go to your, go to the, the variance.
Which I did and I went to the memo was on.
Go to area map.
I'm sorry, but the only thing showing up on mine is the memo, the beast, the memo.
Hold on a second. Good, right here. I got an area map.
Well, wait a minute. Okay, good enough. Thank you. Let me take a look at this. This one here.
This is actually in that little bottom section, correct? On the map.
Yes, that is out, yeah, it's towards the bottom part of that lot.
Right.
Where you have that, there's two properties there and this is down towards where that smaller, smaller piece is. But they're both owned by, of course, the same property owner.
Has DOT had anything to say about this?
No.
And like I say, I pulled over there one day and looked at it and I can't, I can't see where it would create a problem.
Any other questions? Joe, you good?
Yeah.
Looked it up, okay.
Yeah.
We got anybody that signed up?
Sorry, Barry. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anybody sign up?
Yes, sir. Jimmy and Paula Little and Elder A.C. Williams.
Case.
Jimmy.
Okay, wonderful. You can both put your hand on that. Do you swear that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Hello, everybody. I'm a nurse. I've never done anything like this, so please forgive me. The reason, of course, that we want to, to build, when we bought the property, what's there now was, was already there. It was pre-existing. And we made family investment in the camper.
The building and concrete pad?
Yes, sir.
Okay, concrete pad was already there.
Yes, sir. The only thing we've done is mowed the grass. But we made a family investment on, on a camper. I made an investment to purchase a classic vehicle from my brother that was my father's to try to restore it and just trying to put a roof over it just to protect those investments. And I would think with being a roof, it would make it a structure. It would actually increase a bunch of property taxes a little bit to kind of benefit the county. But I just hope it's something we can do. I really don't feel like it would be imposing on anybody. Property behind us is wetlands. It would, the back end of it would mirror the exact same line that the current existing building is on. We wouldn't try to go further back or anything like that. Just want to cover it so we can protect our investment, that's all.
Is it? Any questions for you?
All right, thank you, sir. Absolutely. Thank you.
You got one more?
We have, we have Constance Corum on the public hearing and Elder A.C. Williams, but I don't know if.
I didn't want to be a part of the public hearing. I wanted to.
Okay, no problem. And are you Elder A.C. Williams? Do you swear that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
So help me God.
Yes, ma'am.
Great good morning.
Good morning.
I am Elder Angela Williams. I have been a resident of this county for over 30 years. My mother purchased the property between the late 90s and the late 2000s in our years, 2000, 2019.
Which property is that?
1008 South Brazil Avenue, Mount Olive, North Carolina, 28365. It's a little touching though with me this morning.
It's not this, right?
Man, that's not about, this is about the public hearing on the variance request?
Yes. I'm, I'm going.
In Little River?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going with that.
All right.
I'm trying to understand the difference between the two because we're told constantly that we can't do anything where we are. But I'm trying to see the expansion for as that property. Is that a good enough question to ask?
They'll, they'll respond if they wish to. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I just wanted to, you know, understand the difference thereof because we are planning to do some things and I want to make sure that if they can do it, then we can do it. And that's all.
May I, may I, may I say something, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, so for clarity, when you say do something, you're talking about in the town of Mount Olive?
No, sir. We are not technically the town of Mount Olive. We are the counties. We are at the ET of the town of Mount Olive. But we've been given permission back when Charles Brown and all of them was in dealing with the town of Mount Olive to, to be separate and Wayne County took on the responsibility of our area.
Okay.
I mean, the only thing that I feel like I could say, or we could say right now is that once you decide your plans.
Already decided.
Have you presented those plans to?
Not yet because we want to see how this is going to play out.
Oh, okay. Well, once you present your plans, I mean, I think that we, you know, I don't, unless there's something different in your plans or something that's by law, by, you know, that we can't do it or can't approve it, then I think, well, it's still a case by case. But, you know, overall, I mean, I don't see where we, we might, we might not have a problem. There might be a problem. But it might be a problem that might benefit you also that you might not know about at the time. So I would just say, once you do present and it will come back before us at the same time and then at that point, we'll decide.
All right, so, and please may I get clarity, please? Who is my county commissioner?
1008.
1008, South Brazil Avenue.
I'm more like, I'm a large commissioner.
And who is the, who is the other?
Commissioner Williams.
I want to make sure that they, they know who I.
We get, we get along most of the time.
It's not a point of getting along.
As Commissioner, as Commissioner Foster said, it's kind of a case-by-case basis.
Right.
So we're not, you know, we can't tell you yea or nay on your situation. This is just based on this public hearing.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding because I want to make sure that, as you just said, that we all get along.
So what you need to do is present what your stuff is to the planning, to the inspections or planning?
Yes, and I have talked with him before. Yes, sir. We've had plenty of conversations.
Yeah, we mentioned something about the ETJs. Is this in the TJ?
Yeah, the ETJ, basically it still goes through the town of Mount Olive. The setbacks are through the town, the planning stuff, but now the inspections department took over building inspections for the town. So if there is a variance request, it would still get, would actually go through the town of Mount Olive versus the county. And then once the town of Mount Olive approved it, then the county's building inspection.
That's right.
So that's how it works.
Do you remember the letter that, that was given to separate us from the town of Mount Olive?
I don't.
So I'll, I'll make sure you get that information again. Yes, I understand.
So what you need to do is, is, is get through the town of Mount Olive and if there's anything building, our building inspection will take over from there.
Right, but I want to make sure that, I wanted to make sure that we see all of this in one. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Any other, Carol, is anybody else?
Uh, no, sir. That is it.
Okay, so we'll close the, the public hearing on the.
Setback. You're closing with order of adjustment.
Order of adjustments on the public hearing. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I have a motion that we'll approve it.
You didn't say that.
No, sir.
Hold on. I'm going to be solo for a minute, so y'all bear with me. Can you see it to vote?
Nope. Nope.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, that's a unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we'll reconvene the board of commissioners meeting and then we'll go into the public hearing. Do I, yes, sir.
One, one question, just so I know, never start back on the building and stuff. What do I need to do now as far as getting permits?
You just need to go to the inspections department, correct, Mary?
They'll be notified after this meeting. They'll be notified.
Okay, and the exact distance from the property line, just so I know so I don't mess up. And the exact distance from the property line, just so I know, so I don't mess up, I won't do everything, just as right as I can.
Thirty-five feet, from the front property line.
Thirty-five feet.
Not from the edge of the road, but from the actual front property line, yep.
All right.
Thank you all so much.
Yes, sir. All right, public hearing to receive public comment on the amendment to Section 70-105, Subbrace 4, the Wayne County subdivision ordinance to require a fire hydrant to be placed at the entrance of all new subdivision. Yes, sir, Mr. Barry.
All right, yeah, this is an ordinance amendment, this is a subdivision ordinance amendment for basically new subdivisions. Currently, the ordinance requires fire hydrants to be spaced 500 feet, or every lot be within 500 feet of a fire hydrant. One concern that's come up on the planning board level in review of some of our Platts, is that a lot of times, the first fire hydrant will start 500 foot inside the subdivision. So when a fire truck pulls in, a lot of times, they, if there's a fire in front of the subdivision, they have to pull past it, turn around, come back, or go to the, you know what I mean? So they've requested that the ordinance be amended where that first fire hydrant start at the entrance of the subdivision, so there's one there when you first get there, and then start your spacing at that point, where every lot would be, would be in 500 feet after that. And then additionally, with this amendment, we're also looking at it being on the right-hand side of that entrance, so when you pull in, the fire truck pulls in, it'll be on the right. I did talk with, I did get comments back from McDavid Associates with Wayne Water Districts this week, and one comment he made was, on occasion, there will be times where it'll go on the left side, they'll have to put water line on the left side, but he said, in those cases, they would put in a larger, he said, larger than number of fire hydrant leg, normal fire hydrant leg that would go up underneath the road to the right side. So he said it's possible to do that, they would just have to put in that, that leg to get that fire hydrant over, if it did go on the left side.
Well, it's the minimum of six-inch pipe for a fire hydrant.
Yeah, but you want more than that if you're going into a subdivision.
Yeah, so...
So, so wait, wait, make sure I understand, it's still going to go on the right-hand side, but what he's saying is, they would, if the, if the line is on the left, they're going to actually run up under the drive, the road, and put it on the right.
That's right.
It's going to be on the right regardless.
Yes, he said it's, it's possible to do, they would just have to put in that leg to get it to the right side.
Right. Okay. Any, do we have any, anybody sign up, Carol?
Uh, not for this one, no, sir.
Okay. All, we got any questions for Barry? All right, thank you, Barry, what a pleasure to be here, what a pleasure to board.
I make a motion, we accept your recommendation.
Okay. Oh, is this one going to come up, or do we need to vote manually?
I'm sorry, say it.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yeah, thank you for that, right now.
All right. All right, so that's that, we're going to go back to, we had an appointment committee meeting this morning. Appointment committee meeting this morning, and up coming appointments through December is the Mount Olive Board of Adjustments and Planning Board. Is up in November of 2024, we're waiting info from the Mount Olive Clerk of the Board. We always need people for the Nursing Home and Adult Care Committee. And the Wayne Exec, Exec, Executive Jetport has recommended Mr. Chad Coker for another expired term for the Advisory Committee. For another term, his, his term is expired, but he's reappointed, so they would like to do that at their next meeting. All right, to unfinished business, make sure I ain't missed anything, unfinished business. Number nine, a motion to adopt a resolution by the County of Wayne to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement funds with appropriate budget amendment. Mr. Andrew.
Good morning again. So what's come before you for this is, this is our request for application process that we've gone through with your opioid working group. So just as a reminder, and I feel like we've repeated this several times at this point, but Wayne County is set to receive about 11.2 million dollars in two separate waves. So Wave One was the distributors and the manufacturers, and then Wave Two was various retailers, so Walmart, CVS, pharmacies like that. So at your direction, we created a working group that distributed a request for applications to local nonprofits, and then Wayne County agencies as well. So that was issued April, April 1st of this year. We had a pre-bid meeting, which some of the nonprofits attended. We did have a couple of questions that were incorporated to the RFA, and then the proposals were due May 10th. So we received 15 funding requests from 14 different applicants. So we divided our working group into three different sub, subcommittees based off the type of application that was received. So we submitted for early intervention, recovery, recovery support, reentry programs, and then also treatment for incarcerated persons. So those were the strategies, strategies that we identified, those were the option As. So we have come back to you with 10 total strategy recommendations based off of the application, and each one of those was scored as well. So we developed a, a scoring rubric that went through. So out of the first subcommittee, which was early intervention and, early intervention and treatment for incarcerated people, there was a $175,000 award to the sheriff's office for three years, that's for their, the substance misuse program at the jail. Wayne County Public Schools received, was recommended to receive $410,500, and that's a three, that's over three years. COM, which is the local nonprofit, another $50,000. Recovery support, the Wayne County Day Reporting Center was recommended to receive $50,000 per year for three years. ATS of North Carolina, which does business as, I believe, let me double check, because you'll probably recognize that name before you recognize ATS. One second. I think it's the Goldsberg Treatment Center. So they specialize in MAT services for people in the area who are struggling with substance abuse. They requested and are recommended to receive $25,000 a year for two years. Hope Ministries, the subcommittee recommended $97,888. The Wayne County Public Health Department, $50,000 for one year, and then Four Day Movement was the other recovery support recommendation, and that's $150,000 for one year. The last subcommittee was for reentry, and Wayne Community College has requested $180,000, that's $36,000 a year for five years. And that's for their reentry council that they run and operate at the community college. And then Hope Restorations was awarded 111,600, $100,600, that's $55,800 a year for two years. So the total amount recommenda, recommended by the working group was about 1.75, 1.7 million dollars. 675 of that would go to county departments and programs, that also includes another $180,000 to Wayne Community College, and then $410,000 to Wayne County Public Schools. So total received to date is about 2.5 million dollars. Keep in mind, we also did an award at your last meeting for the Sheriff's Department, that was to cover some of those medical expenses from our provider. So I think to date, we've got about a little over 2, $2 million that we're going to have allocated at the end of today. And like I said, that's out of about 2.5 million dollars. The tentative plan for the working group is, we would periodically open this up for applications again. I think ideally, we would wait until next year and then open up another application period. The directive from the county manager and, and just management was to retain some of this money, not allocate it all right now. So that way, if somebody does approach you, not during an application, and the board feels passionately about that program, you can move forward with it. I know one particular option that's being discussed right now is perhaps a three-county drug recovery court, that's in the preliminary stages, that might be a project. Or if you just have another project that, that pops up, similar to what happened with the GAO, or for the JCPC organization, if there's a need, then you would have those funds there. But this, this is the recommendation from the working group. Like I said, it's taking a little while, but all our applications, all the contracts, everything was done in consultation with the North Carolina County Commissioner Association. So we've worked closely with their staff to try to make sure that we get something that is fair to everyone who submitted an application. And your working group did a lot of, did a lot of work, I can't take credit for that, I didn't sit through all the interviews, but they did interview all, all the applicants as well.
Thank you, Andrew, anybody got any questions for Andrew?
No, no, no. I had a question about the, I just wanted to know, I don't, well, the sheriff is here, he might can answer. How many individuals per month, or any, does the jail bring in and, 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 and come out per month? Or if he knows, or if that's even a statistic that they keep up?
Either he could answer that, or the jail navigator, your jail navigator might, I'm not sure.
Uh, yes, I would like, I can get that information for you, Michelle Bass is our jail navigator, she keeps up all those stats. But we have quite a few in process right now that are either in incarceration and being treated, or they have now got peer support out in the community. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Chair?
Yes, sir.
It's two, it's, it's twofold.
Okay.
First of all, you know, I want to thank the staff for, you know, picking these applicants out and, you know, making sure that we took our time, you know, to make sure the money went to the right places. And secondly, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution by the County of Wayne to direct the expenditure of opioid settlement and appropriate budget amendments.
I have a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. It's still not coming up.
Mine came up.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may add to, we've mentioned in several different presentations, there's the NC portal, so the public can go online and pull up individual counties and see how this money is being spent. So I know that there's a delay, there might be like a, maybe a quarterly delay or a month or two, but this information will be uploaded to the portal. So any citizens can go on and see how Wayne County is allocating their money and where specifically it's going.
Thank you, sir. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All, please cast your vote. Is it going to show up, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, then we'll go on to new business, a motion to adopt a resolution by the County of Wayne authorizing execution of program opioid settlement, and approve, approving the second supplemental agreement for additional opioid funds.
So as, as luck will have it, we're actually getting more money, so it relates back to opioid, opioid funding. So you remember, I'm, I'm just discussing, you all, we presented before, we had the Wave One funding and then the Wave Two funding. I mentioned several months ago that there was a Kroger settlement that was coming down the line, that's mostly isolated to the southeast, because that's where most Kroger locations. That has been finalized, so you all will need to take action, the deadline to take action on that, to receive those funds, is August 12th. So this is similar, what they call the supplemental agreement, it's similar to the one that you passed for Walmart, CVS, we're just filling in Kroger and the amount. So it will be paid off over the course of 11 years, and it's approximately $331,000. So that amounts to about another $30,000 a year that we're going to get for the next 11 years. So once you all pass this today, we will upload this with the state, and then we'll electronically sign all our paperwork, so we can get that process as well.
Can you kind of explain to me the Kroger settlement, I mean, is that the grocery chain and what?
It's the pharmacies located in the grocery store.
Okay, the pharmacies, okay, all right.
So this is similar to Walmart, CVS, all the pharmacies, this was just another pharmacy that they were still working through, so it would be pharmacies that are located in the grocery store, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Entertain the motion.
And we did, if I may, I, I did mention this to a couple of you, and also emailed out. You may have seen that there was a Supreme Court ruling in the Purdue Pharma case. I just want to assure you, there's been some misinformation out there, this does not affect, affect the funds that we've already received to date. Purdue Pharma was going to be another settlement on top of everything we've gotten. Since that ruling, that's going to have to go back to the drawing board, and they're going to have to work on that settlement again. But I want to assure you, it doesn't affect any money that we're scheduled to receive, all that, we're locked in. So that's over and above what we've already taken action on, so.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we adopt a resolution by the County of Wayne authorizing execution of the Kroger opioid settlement and approving the second supplemental agreement for additional opioid funds.
Thank you, sir, have a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. All right, thank you. Entertain the motion to approve the budget amendment, as submitted.
So moved.
All, please, motion on the floor, please cast your vote. We got, just raise your hand, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Before we go to public comments, do we have anybody signed up, Ms. Bogan?
We do, Constance Coram.
Okay, Ms. Coram. Just reminding you, you have four minutes.
Thank you so much, good morning, Commissioners and Chairman. I'm here this morning, basically, to speak to the citizens of Wayne County. I have I have been before this commission asking that my department be recognized, that money was, was taken from the department. My budget that I had last year, which I barely was able to make it through last year, was significantly decreased this year. In 2021, 2022 budget, former county manager granted the register of deeds $90,000, and it was supposed to be distributed 30,000 for three years. I followed all of the guidelines that was required of me for our capital improvement plan. Yet each year, I was denied funding for those, for those plans. Out of the 90,000 that the former county manager provided to me, I can only account for 24,000 of those funds. I have 40,000 that I gained in revenue from vital records, I don't see that in my budget. I don't see where 90, uh, $90,000 went. Commissioner Foster, forgive me, Commissioner, if I'm putting you in a awkward position, but was told that there was $60,000 left in my account to use. But whenever I went to the meeting to inquire about those funds, I was told I had 20,000. And I asked, where is that money? And nobody has taken time to explain to me where the money is. I've been told about a secret account, that money's being placed in the capital improvement program, that there were fundings from, that amounted to 20-plus dollars that I can guarantee is the same amount that my vendor showed me that was paid from my account or from that secret account, but I'm understanding that's probably where my funds are. I'm here today, asking for an independent audit of my account. I am solely responsible for my budget. You all took that responsibility away from me by putting my former employee over my account and providing me information at leisure. I just learned how to completely write a budget amendment a couple of days ago, despite the fact that I've been trying to learn how to do it for the last three years. My integrity, my, and the trust that people have put into me is all I have. And I do not want my last year in this office to say that... And I do not want, my last year in this office, to say that I misallocated any funding. And because I have so much concerns about the inaccuracies that are in my report, I would like to have an independent audit. I have been before you all, I get ignored. No one will respond. I've been forced to sign invoices that I did not want to sign because I did not approve of them. Again, I'm asking for an independent audit, and I deserve it. The register of deeds and the sheriff's department are two departments that are completely outside of the ream of the county manager. I am asking you, county commissioners, to provide for me an independent audit because I have no control over my budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are there any questions?
We don't have any questions.
Thank you.
What, have we got anybody else signed up?
No, sir.
All right, public comment section is closed. County managers report?
Yes, sir, I have several comments. First thing I'd like to do is thank Jay's Kitchen for making their, their award available to us for our Wayne County Hero Spotlight Award. I just want to make sure that we, we show appreciation to Jay's Kitchen for making that available and effort that they put forth for that. Also, I'd like to thank our EMS staff for the tremendous job that they did and that they do every day. I also like to thank that a big part of that was our 911 dispatch and our emergency dispatch process there that provides assistance over the phone. They're first on the scene, and they, they do this job day in and day out. And you, you don't really hear a lot about it, but that's just a normal day in EMS and 911 and for our sheriff's department. So I'd like to thank them officially there. I'd also like to congratulate, or congratulate Vida and Michelle on their promotions within their respective departments. I'd also like to thank the opioid working group, the time that they invested in this process of determining which projects were eligible for this year's funding round. It's a varied group made up of employees, commissioners, and citizens and city staff, and they put a lot of effort into that. And, and I just show appreciation for that because it's a tremendous job to try to grasp something and try to put it to work and get it in operation and get those funds dispersed so we can get moving with those different programs. Also, the last comment I want to do is a reminder, if you have any legislative goals, I'm assembling our legislative goals list to come back before this board for the next meet, for your next meeting, for your approval. And these are the goals that we would send to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners that we do every year. And we're just trying to be very thorough in making sure we're covering everything that needs to be addressed. I've reached out to the department heads for their input, and I'm reaching out to you. And we have some goals from last year that I'm just going to carry over into this new list, but it will need your approval at the next meeting before I forward that back to NCACC. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do we, do we need to have a, a work session or something on this? So we'll all be on the same page, or can you handle it and just?
We'll do it at the next.
At the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
So if we do it at the next meeting, you still have time to?
Oh, yeah.
Present it again?
Absolutely. And Mr. Chairman, if we could ask the county manager to forward to each one of us the existing goals that you're carrying forward. I'll do that today. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you. Want to just send my condolences out to the Ozell Foster family. They had a loved one that they lost. Also to the Peacock family, I just lost my uncle. We buried him on Saturday. So, you know, just want to let people know, we, you know, we care about you guys. And, you know, don't stop reaching out to the family members just because we've buried our, our loved ones. Just, you know, make sure you go there and you check on the family. Because as we know, these times are still really tough on, you know, the spouses and the sisters and the brothers and the siblings, all the siblings. Also, I want to thank this board for entrusting me to be a voting delegate for our NCA, NCACC conference. Really appreciate you trusting me to do the right thing for the county of Wayne. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hesitate to bring this matter up, but based upon the comments during public comment period, that is the second time that I have heard some allegations in regards to the budget of our register of deeds. So first of all, I suppose I want to address one issue at this time, and that is the so-called secret account. And if I could ask our budget director to address the fact of secret account? How many secret accounts have you got?
We don't have any secret accounts.
And I, I knew that would be your answer because we do not have secret accounts. This is a government organization, and as such, there are no secret accounts in Wayne County budget. I do acknowledge the fact, and if I could ask this question, that is, how many times, how many years has our budget office and department gotten awards from the state in regards to our budget process? That has gone on for how many years?
20 plus.
How many?
20 plus.
20-plus years. And I can assure you that the state is not going to give our department awards if we have secret accounts. That said, I would ask that we address the concerns that were expressed by our register of deeds, so that we as commissioners will have the facts to be able to answer if there's any questions that come. So I would ask that the budget office address those particular concerns in regards to capital improvement plan, budgeting, and so forth, so that we do have some information. All of the commissioners will have that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Laneycock?
Yes, sir. I, I don't have a whole lot. You know, we've been through a very tragic weekend this past weekend. And we've got to, this nation has got to come together. I mean, we're all God's children, making a difference, what party, what race, what gender. And we're, it's just my personal opinion. We have, this country's going in the wrong direction. And I'm so proud of this board. You know, we've got both parties represented. We don't always agree, but, you know, we, we, we always have come up with a solution. And I just, I just pray that this country will come together regardless of, you know, like I say, regardless of what gender, what race, what party affiliation. We've, we've got to quit this bickering, going back and forth, and, and remember that we're all Americans, and remember the men and women that sacrificed their life to give us this freedom. And we're, you know, we're, we're kind of acting like kindergarten students, fussing and going back and forth. And we need to put our priority in the right place and remember that this is America, the greatest country in the world. And, and right now, we're going in the wrong direction. And like I say, I am so proud of this board working together. Certainly, we have differences of opinion sometimes. But, but every time we leave this room, we, we are still friends. And that's the way it should be on the state level and the national level. And, you know, we just, we just, we're living in troubled times. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Borvakek?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm real pleased about the Purple Heart Convention. Anybody would like to go to something that shows what our country has given, what the men and women who lost their lives have given, the families who sacrifice this. You will see it at the Purple Heart Convention. Like I said earlier, you go in with a lot of inspiration, but when you come out, you really see what our nation stands for. Number two, the monies, I do want to thank all our staff, you know, for putting all this together, you know, for the money that we're receiving. There's one thing I would like to see, though. We're giving out a lot of money. I'd like to see the end results of all this money. What kind of progress was made from this money? What kind of stats do we have to show improvements? That, you know, if we give $410,000 to the public schools, what do we get for that $410,000? Or $50,000 for recovery support? What is the stats of that on showing how many people have recovered from this money? That's what I would like to see on this. I think we need some kind of recognition on the money that we're putting in place on these groups, what our return is on the money. All right, well, that's good. Do we, will we see the results of it? Okay. I don't recall any, but I guess this is the first one that we've really done. But I think that would be very well needed to see this.
They ain't got the money yet.
Yeah, but one day I'd like to see it.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes, you know, I listened to what my fellow commissioner said about the awards and the finances and everything, you know. And I think awards are great, but also at the same time, we have to recognize, what is that award for? A war could be for turning in the budget on time. It could be for just being in compliance with certain numbers. It doesn't mean that the state checked every single thing that's going on here at the county. Personally, for me, I've asked for different departments' budgets in five times. And all five times, I got a different report. That's unacceptable. You know, also, you know, we've, we've had issues, you know, here, just to be honest, with, with our sheriff department. We had a finance director leave. So don't sit and act like we haven't had any problems here. You know, I was told by the jet port director that, you know, we're only losing $30,000 a month out there. That's on camera. He said that $30,000, $40,000. It's almost a half a million a year at times, up to almost a million. So for someone to say that and say that everything is A-OK, I, I don't think it is personally. That's why I don't vote for the budget amendments. That's why I'm changing my stance on certain things that I vote for when it comes to finances here. You know, we, we supposedly had an auditor come in and audit the jet port. And, you know, I asked her one question repeatedly. Are you sure these, this is the number of what we're losing? She never answered that question. And I know why she never answered that question, because she didn't want to put herself on record as saying those numbers were facts. She didn't think that I knew that, but I did. I just didn't say anything at the time. I'm always two steps ahead of the game, because I've already been through this plenty of times, been through this with the city. So I say that we grant her audit because of the simple fact, we did it in one department, let's do it in another. And her department is totally different from that department. She was voted in, so let's respect her. You don't have to like her. You don't have to like anything that she's doing. But as county commissioners and as, as, as representatives for this entire county, let's respect our register of deeds and do what she asks. That's it. Thank you.
Sheriff, you got some numbers?
Commissioner Foster, I have a problem. The jail navigator got those figures. So far, we have, with our substance misuse program in the jail, we have dealt with 200, over 260 individuals at this time. Approximately 30 to 40 per month are being dealt with now. Our grant ends in September. That's the reason we were asking for monies from the opioid settlement funds. We have a 5% recidivism rate, which is, I think, excellent for the type of program we're dealing with. So those are the figures for you, sir.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to know, because when people ask, I want to be able to give them the numbers, but that's, that's great. And thank you. I knew what was going on, and some of the programs was coming outside, coming in and also, but I still want to know those exact numbers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. The, in regards to the opioid settlement funds, I've been very vocal on my stance on this. Sometimes I feel that monies that are being distributed out, it's distributed to the same ones, and it's a revolving door, with the same people coming in and out, in and out. And you're just, you're just, and I'm, some problems, like what I fixed and saved, but there's some people you're not going to be able to help. You've got to start somewhere with a prevention or intervention, and I'm a strong advocate for that. We've got children in the school system, in elementary school, that are doing stuff that they shouldn't be doing. You're not going to save them all, but you got to start somewhere. So that's, that was my, I've been very vocal on that, and I appreciate the, the committee looking at that as well. The next thing is, this weekend, whether you agree, disagree, support, don't support President Trump, that's, what happened is unacceptable. And I'm going to read something from a very good friend of mine. And it's, it's a quote, "This has gone too far. I don't care about who you are, who you support, or any other trivial issue. If you think political violence is the answer, you, in capital letters, are the problem." And that quote was from Senator Jim Perry. When we come to the place in life that we think that violence is the answer, we've got a major problem. That man, would like to say, whether you agree or disagree, he's a husband, a father, grandfather. I mean, you, this, this man is a leader, a former leader. And in my opinion, hopefully, he's the next leader of our country. That's Chris's, that's Chris's opinion. But I will say this right here. You've got, you've got leaders in this state that are involved in politics that are having second, second thoughts on why am I putting myself through this? And I, and I'm not saying that's the reason that Jim got out, because it's not. But I want to, I want to recognize Senator Jim Perry. Yes, he was our senator in Wayne County for several years. He is, he's been a good friend of mine for a many years, very instrumental in things that have gone through that we've got in eastern North Carolina. He's put things in place that our form, that our future members of our community will benefit from economic investments that he has put forth and been instrumental in getting to, to our area. And he's, he's going to be missed. He's not going anywhere. He's still going to be very instrumental in what goes on in eastern North Carolina. But I want to tell you and thank you for his service to, to eastern North Carolina and to the state of North Carolina. All right, we don't have any more close session due, Mr. Warden. Yes, sir.
I want to say one more thing, Mr. Chairman. Listening to the news this morning, we're talking about, you brought it up, vitamin A. There were some parents there that was talking about the loss of an eight-year-old child. Went to a Christmas party, oh, I'm sorry, parade. In the parade, somebody threw candy out in the parade, and fentanyl was in that. That child died instantly from the fentanyl that was in this candy. And talking about the cruelty that we have going on. I mean, we've got some problems in our nation. And if we don't get back to our Savior, our God, I don't know what's going to happen to our nation. But I, I just absolutely teared up, looking at these parents talking about somebody putting fentanyl in a child's candy and deliberately throwing it out to a child to take. fentanyl in a child's candy and deliberately throwing it out to a child to take. That child went to a Christmas party, I mean, a Christmas parade to enjoy, and their families and everybody. Now, that, that is cruelty beyond my imagination. I can't even wrap my head around such cruelty. So each night, we need to do a little extra prayer. We got to get our nation back, and we got to get rid of these kind of people and incarcerate them where they need to be.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman? If I might echo your earlier comments in regards to Senator Jim Perry. I, I really think that we need to draw up a resolution for this board to pass at our next meeting honoring him for his service to our county and to the state of North Carolina.
I'm mentioning that to him, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to follow up on what Commissioner Barbara A. Cox said. You know, this past weekend, that could have been President Biden, and I feel the same way. I mean, you know, you don't, you just don't do things like that. I mean, it's, it's uncalled for, and like I say, it, it could have happened to him just as easy as it did Mr. Trump. But we've, we've, we've got to, we've got to put our differences at the ballot box, and, 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 you know, and we've got radicals in both parties. I mean, they, you know, we all know that. But, I mean, any elected official is, is under the same pressure, I mean, not as great as it is for being president or a former president, but we, this, this country's just going in the wrong direction, and, and, you know. I, I don't have the answer. I don't, I don't think anyone has the answer. But we've got to work together and, and, and try to get this country back to what it used to be, regardless of the race, gender, party affiliation, it don't make any difference. We've got to come together, and we hadn't gotten to agree, but we've got to come together and stop this silly, crazy things that's going on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
All right, y'all have a safe week. A meeting adjourned.